We will go ahead and get started with the September 5th study session. Today we'll have our quarterly economic indicators and report. Dr. Jones, if you want to come on down and share. I know we have some council members who are going to be trickling in from other events this morning, but they'll trickle in as they come in. So thank you for being here. I believe we had to postpone this earlier in the year, so we're excited to have another update.
So do we have a way of advancing the slides?
Yes, Dr. Jones, right in front of you. There's a clicker. It's actually on the podium there, I think maybe under your hand.
There we go.
And it's going to be the down arrow, I believe.
Very good. Well, thank you, Councilmember Zeponi, for the introduction. It's great to be back. I think it's been at least four or five months since we did this. And what we're going to show you today is the latest data, what we're calling the quarter three report for the indicators that we have agreed to track for you. So let me see if we can get this started.
Go the other arrow. Try the other arrow.
So as you've known, we've shown you this slide before. We cover a few categories: demographics, labor market, residential construction, non-residential construction, and then taxable sales and revenue. And you asked, in the last 12 months, to add three more, which we have, and we'll go over those along the way. So unless, unless we note otherwise, what we're talking about are city of Spokane data. So I wanted to touch on population because that, that metric just was updated a couple months ago. And I've shown you something like this before. And I've, basically, the story that we have as of 2024 is the same story that I showed you in 2023, in that the city of Spokane has a very slow population growth rate. So you may not know this, but there's now 233, yeah, 233,000 souls in the, in the district limits of the city. But what we show in that orange line over the purple bars is a growth rate comparing to the county. And I hope you can see that for most of the period, the county growth rate, in blue, has been considerably higher than the city growth rate. In fact, the most recent year, between 2024 and 2023, it was barely above zero. So this has been true for a long period of time, and, and I just want to point that out. When you can look at this as market share of, of, of the population, and 20 years ago, in 2004, the share of the county population taken by the city was 46%. And as of 2024, it's now 42%. And I think it's completely reasonable with this trend line to expect that it will be 40% in 2030. Yes, Councilmember Cathcart.
Just wondering, is it, is there a way to really break this down and understand, you know, who, who is staying here, who's leaving, who's actually moving to the city versus the county? You know, even matching it up, looking at like housing data to see maybe what's driving the growth in different, different areas?
Well, I got a, the next slide kind of touches on that, so hold that thought. And, you know, the, the short answer is, we don't know specifically, but with, with a bit of time, there could be some analysis of census data to look at certainly the demographic profile of the city versus demographic, demographic profile of the county. So that, that could be done. I just want to remind you that in-migration is what's driving population growth, whether it's in the city or whether it's in the county. What is not driving population growth is a, is a baby boom. This is true throughout the country. We are experiencing a rapidly declining birth rate nationwide, and I'm sure it's, it's the same here. We don't track birth rates. But the blue line is the actual gain in population year by year, and the orange line is the in-migration number. And you can see there, before maybe 2020, there was still a gap between the blue line and the orange line. In other words, there was actually some birth versus death gains. But now, as of the pandemic, the two lines are coincident. And so basically, everything that you can attribute population growth to is in-migration. So then, what drives in-migration? That's what I, I think you were talking about, Councilmember Cathcart. And here's just a few things. People come here for jobs. People come here to retire. Don't forget that students are counted, so if enrollments go up at, at our higher ed institutions within the city, which I think is largely Gonzaga, that would help. A lower cost of living, and there could be other, other reasons why people come to this area in general. And then the decision to land in a city or in a, something outside Spokane City, I can, I can think of a couple of different variables, so it can be done. Okay, and I think I've got one more slide in this population series, but this is looking at in-migration from out-of-state folks. And the, the punchline here is that it has declined for the last two or three years. So from out-of-state folks who find us, you can see that 2023 was 10% below 2022. The peak we've seen in this series, which we don't show here, this is quarterly, the peak we've seen in this series was actually before the pandemic. 2028 is when more people from out-of-state came to Spokane than before. So I don't know all the reasons for that, but that's, that's just what is going on and, and as well as we can measure through driver's license surrenders. And I'll point out again, at the bottom bullet, this has been sort of a standard in all the times we've presented to you. The, the states that are the most important that give Spokane population gains are Idaho, California, Oregon, and then, interestingly, Texas and Arizona. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Professor Cullen. Dr. Cullen covers the labor force and residential and commercial construction. So, Dr. Cullen.
Hi there. So I have the employment data and labor force data for you. This first slide is the civilian labor force. And so just a reminder that this is made up of everybody who either has a job or has indicated that they want a job. So those that are actively looking for work as well. And so on this graph, you can see that the darker purple areas are the most recent quarter of Q2 of 2024, related to a year ago, same quarter. So Q2 of '23, and then the first on the left bar is the total size of the labor force two years ago, back in 2022. And so, good news, it's still strong. We had a slight dip in the beginning part of 2024, that first quarter, and that's normal. There's a slight contraction typically in Q1s, and then a nice rebound. And so our CLF is the, it's still a little below where we were at the end of '23, but I would say it's still, the civilian labor force is looking good. It has increased roughly 1,000 year-over-year from 2024 back to '23, back to 2022. So if you look, you know, quarter, same quarter a year ago, same quarter a year ago, because it is cyclical, cyclical, you do want to make sure that you're going a full year back, and you're not just necessarily looking at quarter-to-quarter changes, per se. So, and then which is the, the down arrow? There we go. So that was everybody who is interested in a job or has a job. This is the number of jobs. This is employment. And so this is employment in the city. Again, the darker shaded ones are, this is quarterly, and the darker shaded would be the 24 on the right and then 22 on the left. And you can see then that we had a drop, a significant drop, in first quarter of '24, right after the end of the year in '23, which was strong. That was a relative peak in '23, fourth quarter. Slight drop, but a nice rebound in a strong second quarter of this year. So looking good in terms of the number of jobs here. Nice little rebound going on. So looking good. And then unemployment is that difference, right? So unemployment is people who would like a job but have not found one yet. So there's a mismatch between, you know, the CLF and the employment. And so this is not quarterly data, as you can see by all those bars. The bars are actually the count, the number of people who are unemployed. And then the two rates that we are tracking here is both the city and the county compared. At the end of, I believe, is this July or June? At the end of June, we were at 4.2, which is, we have fallen after a little rise there late in '23. We're down to 4.2, which is low for us economists. We are below the state. The state was at 4.9, so almost 5%. The state average, we're at 4.2, very, very close to and just under the national average even. So performing really well in terms of our unemployment rate here. So good signs for the local economy right now. I would say in terms of the employment measures that we have, so I'll skip over that. Oh, and this is where then Dr. Jones is going to give us a little bit more about the employment by sectors, right?
So let's understand where the money comes from for city tax revenues for the general economy. And you'll recall that we have several sectors here that we show the, largely the, largely the largest, and a couple that you wanted. So we're going to start with the largest, and if, if, I think I've said this before, but we have to consider the size of the healthcare sector if we want to understand Spokane. It is gargantuan compared to everything else. About 46,000 people worked in the most recent quarter. You can, you can, actually, that's an average. The most recent quarter, which is on the far right, was over 46,000. And this, this sector has recovered mightily since the start of the pandemic. You can see that the average in 2019 is now exceeded by 3,700 jobs. This is true nationally. Healthcare continues to be a real growth spot for the economy as a whole. The, the pay or the earnings, what we call the average annual wage, is about equal to the overall earnings in the county. So 19% of the county workforce is captured in, in this sector. Now, you asked us to add this, and government. And so government is the second-largest sector, and government has three, three legs: federal, state, and local. And of those legs, local is by far and away the most important. And of local, the most important are school districts. So what you really see in the, in the government data are school district employees. But you can see that we have, as the most recent quarter, which was the end of last year, we had almost 37,000 people in the sector, which is close to one out of every six jobs. So the first sector is one out of every five, next sector, one out of every six, that's government. As a share, government's share of total population really hasn't budged much since before the pandemic. So even though it's grown, but you can see a little bit by this count from 34,000 to 37,000, the share is the same. Okay, third-largest sector, retailing. We've always been a retailing center for the, the larger area. And the interesting thing about retailing is that I wouldn't count on it as a growth sector. Things have changed so fast in how, how retail is conducted that we have basically seen a plateauing, and you can, the, that dotted line, which indicates the growth rate, is actually negative. So retailing is, in terms of employment, is, is not growing at all. It's 11% of the county workforce, and you can see that the wages are considerably less than the overall earnings, annual earnings of the county. And some of that's due to the nature of the work. It's part-time. It's not, it's not that, that, that represents a, a full-time employee. Now, this is something that really affects the city of Spokane, which is the hospitality industry, which is, you can see restaurants, bars, coffee shops, and importantly, hotels, lodging. Most of the hotels in the community are located in the city. And you can tell by the, the dotted line, which refers to the first quarter of 2022, it was, had a dramatic increase over 2021, which was kind of the, one of the hearts, if you will, the center of the pandemic. And it was growing by way double digits, 20 to 40% at one time. And since then, it's, it's sort of normalized so that now the, the number, which you see is 20,637 for the most recent quarter, is about equal to what it was the prior year. So big recovery, but not a lot of growth going on right now. And this is very much a city-centric indicator of economic health, as I said. Manufacturing. Even though Spokane City doesn't have the bulk of the manufacturing in the county, it still has some, and it's, continues to be, I think, a very important sector to track because there's no walls in terms of the flow of workers between the city of Spokane and, so to say, other parts of the county. It's the fourth-largest sector. It has large ripple effects, so a dollar spent on payroll in manufacturing usually has more, what we call multiplier effects than other industries, depending on the supply chain. And I'll just say, the modest recovery continues. So not a big recovery, but you can see, compared to a year ago, there's about 125 more workers in, in, in manufacturing, and compared to two years ago, there's about 1,000 more workers. So that's a good thing. Manufacturing pays above the, above the all-county averages, as you might expect. Okay, you asked us to add this, construction. Construction, as Dr. Cullen's going to show you, for the city with permitting data, is a very, very critical sector to the city economy, the county economy. It's the fifth-largest sector, and it's had a very good recovery from the start of the pandemic. So even though there's been slower growth recently, if you compare the count from two years ago, we're still ahead of the game with construction jobs. And you can see it pays, they pay a little better than the all-county average. However, the growth rate has turned negative, and this has a lot to do with the macroeconomy, has a lot to do with interest rates, has a lot to do with residential construction, which you're going to see here shortly. Okay, something that I've tried to stress as a very city-centric sector, where you have lots of employment, is what we call professional and technical services, the knowledge jobs, the white-collar jobs. They typically, they typically operate in an urban environment. And you can see some of the professions: lawyers, accountants, architects, consultants, engineers. This has had, this continues to have the fastest recovery of any sector that we track. That's a good thing, a very good thing, because the average annual wage is, is, is pushing up against $90,000 right now. So at, at the, at the most recent quarter, it was actually about the same as a year before, but about 700 more jobs than two years before. And we're going to end with finance and insurance. This is not a big sector, but it's very often an urban sector. Unfortunately, it has declined considerably since 2021. And so compared to two years ago, we're about 500 jobs less than before, fewer than before. Councilmember, Council President Wilkerson.
Just clarity on how you're identifying finance in this slide, and then you had the white-collar jobs in the previous slide.
Right.
I'm trying to, so is that finance, banking finance, or?
Banks, credit unions, stockbrokers, that's the, that's the essence of this sector. Even though you can, yeah, they are also, to some sense, white-collar jobs, white-collar jobs, but it's, it's, it's only finance. Why do we care? Again, it's, it's a kind of an urban-centric sector, and it pays really well. You can see up there, over $100,000 a year was the 2023 results, which is kind of rare in, in this community. So let me just wrap up by saying that all of the largest sectors in the county now are above pre-pandemic. We've, we've shown a, a real good recovery, except finance and insurance. In, in percentage terms, it's that professional and technical services, the knowledge workers who have grown the fastest, that, that has grown the fastest, although it's slowing down, so I'm a little concerned about that. And in just absolute numbers, in total terms, it's been healthcare that's been driving a lot of changes in the employment market. So any quick questions on that before?
Sorry, Doctor, you may address this. So I'm just looking back at retail and hospitality. Our wages versus the average state, which is still running about 42,000, which is a significant number of the people that we address in the city. Third legislative district is still the force in the state. So I guess I'm just, I guess I just wanted to speak that out loud to myself as reinforcement of what we're actually dealing with as we look at our own financial challenges.
Those two sectors have always been the sort of least paid among all, all parts of the economy, except for agriculture. We don't have much agriculture in the, in the county. And I'll just, just reinforce what I said before, is that some of these jobs are part-time jobs. And so people could be working part-time voluntarily or involuntarily. And so one of the phenomena, which we can't track, is the number of people in these sectors who may have to work two jobs, which we do know occurs a lot. who may have to work two jobs, which we do know occurs a lot nationally. Yes, Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, two, two questions. First, back early on, you were talking about the employment numbers and the labor force, which was around 112,000, total jobs, 107,000, delta of 5,000 and some. So is that, is that typical, or is that indicative of a need to try to encourage more job growth to fill that, that gap?
Well, I think, I mean, the easy answer is, of course, we want to encourage more job growth. And we do have that tracked by Spokane Trends. And job growth in, in the county, we don't have it for the city, has been moderately strong, not, not going gangbusters as a percentage of the, of the labor force.
Well, maybe my question is more, is it, is it urgent? Is that, is that a big number? Is it urgent? Is there, what's your perspective?
Well, I'll let Professor Cullen talk about that real quickly.
Yeah, at 4.2%, that is what we call in economics, a normal amount of unemployment, the natural rate of unemployment, right? Which would be due to approximately 2%, which is structural change, where jobs are gone that are not going to come back. And then 2% of new entrants are people that are leaving because of mismatches. You know what I mean? People are just not fitting in. So there's always going to be some natural turnover. So if we take a snapshot at any point in time, there's going to be people in transition. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and 4.2 obviously sounds great. The raw number of 5,000 in a community our size sounds massive.
Out of 100, so 5 out of 100,000, you know?
Yeah. My, my other question is on the, the finance piece versus the white-collar technical professional before it. Is there a way to look and maybe have a better understanding of why we've seen more growth from the, the technical professional versus the down, the decline of the finance? Is it, is that a national phenomenon, or?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think if you talk to bankers, branches are not popular as they used to be. People aren't as prominent in, in the branches that still are open. And a lot of, a lot of financial transactions, maybe some of yours are personally are done online.
Gotcha. Is there, is there a way through the data to look and see kind of where these, and not just city, but more at the macro level, where these, these were employment, you know, was located? And if they've left and moved, relocated elsewhere to get a sense of, you know, are they still maintaining a physical presence, but they've left the city? Or is there just a way to, to measure that?
I, I don't know of one, Councilmember Cathcart, that would, that would give you that granularity of the, of the data.
Gotcha.
But I think anecdotally, if you talk to friends who are banking execs, you won't be surprised.
Yeah, no.
Councilmember Kusky, you have a question.
I missed some of the statistics here. You said 19% was in healthcare, but then I didn't catch the percentage of government and schools, government jobs.
And, and the question is about?
What percentage of our jobs are the government?
In local schools?
Just the government jobs in general. I saw the breakdown, I didn't see the overall.
Government totals about 16%.
16. And then hospitality, what percentage was that?
What, what percentage?
Hospitality.
Hospitality. Oh, boy. I don't think, I don't think I calculated that. We can, we can take a quick.
Oh, okay.
See if you can do the math real quick in our head.
Okay, so we have 20,000, so we, we would be roughly at, I would say, eight, eight or nine percent?
Yep. Okay, thank you.
One, one more question?
When you're talking about educational jobs, are you then including the universities in those numbers? They are included.
To the extent that they're government employees.
Right, so we.
So Gonzaga may not.
We, we are government employees standing before you, but if we were from Gonzaga, we're in, we're in Bulldog.
Private.
No. And there is a separate sector for that called educational services, which is, well, if they'll be small.
Councilmember Dylan.
Councilmember Dylan.
Yeah, I'm curious, you know, how much of the rise, especially in healthcare, social services, but I guess more specifically healthcare, is a result of the medical school having the trainings, going back, if you were to look at trends back to like 2015, the latter part of kind of 2017, 2018, 2019, and then how that measures up kind of with the rest of the state nationally? Because we are such a healthcare hub, it feels like there is more of a trajectory for positive growth in the healthcare sector, and that's something that Spokane is going to continue to be.
Well, I, I, I don't have stats to put in front of you, but I think it's relatively common that medical students and residents don't stray very far from where they got their education or their residency. So to the degree that we can see that growth, both students and residents, then that's going to bulk up those numbers. Having said that, the, you know, the, by far and away, the largest of the, of the healthcare professional categories is nursing. So the nursing schools are really important. And I'll just put in a quick plug for Eastern. You know, we, we saw an opportunity about five years ago, and it took a while to get there, but, you know, there's a cohort, I think, of 80 now every year in the Eastern program, in addition to the large program that WSU has. But one more point to that, I did, 20 years ago, I did a study on the economic impact. So just trying to put numbers to, to, put consequences to the raw numbers. And the size of the healthcare sector even then was, was the largest in the city. It wasn't 19%. It was more like 15 or 16%. So over that period, it's picked up two or three percentage points. Yes?
On the government numbers, I'm wondering, so if I, if I read it correctly, it said around 60% were local. And, and I assume that's countywide. So this would be all the school districts, city of Spokane, valley, county, all of that all in.
Exactly.
And so 60, okay, so 61% of, you said 16% would be around nine and a half?
Yep.
Okay. So almost 10% of all jobs in the county are from some version of local government?
Correct.
Wow, okay.
Correct. And I'll just say that this number is actually larger in other parts of Washington that we work in, such as central Washington, where they have things like ports, PUDs, which we don't have here. Local, it's local government.
Dylan.
Where do you kind of classify like the Amazon warehouse? And I know we have King Beverage moving into the West Plains and kind of more of the, the packing positions? Because that also seems like that's a continuing growing sector for Spokane.
We, you know, we could track that. It's, 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 it's not in the top five or six. It's, it's called warehousing and transportation. I think that's the formal name of the sector. And for a while, for a while, Amazon was, was put into the category of retail. And then the economists in Olympia decided, no, no, they should be in warehousing, basically logistics. So it kind of messed with the way we track that. But you're right, you know, it's, it's a not insubstantial, not insignificant number in the workforce.
I would comment, Councilmember Dylan, and touring the West Plains, it is absolutely overbuilt with warehousing facilities that are brand-new and are empty in anticipation of Amazon growing more or that whole logistical network. And with the way people do business, I'm just fascinated, the number of brand-new buildings that are sitting out in the West Plains, empty.
Right.
Yeah, I guess, I was just wondering, could you include that as part of these updates going forward? Because I do think logistics is a huge, you know, aspect of, of Spokane industry and, and certainly Amazon and the growth of the warehousing is, is big. So I think just tracking that in our updates.
You can add that, yeah. Yeah, it'd be, I, I don't know offhand because I haven't, I haven't looked at it that closely just how big it is, but it's probably in the top 10. It's probably ahead of finance. So we can, we can do it.
I will speak to logistics because we are the hub, so we got rail, trucks, planes.
Right.
And we, it all comes through Spokane pretty much at some point before it goes somewhere else. So it is big, but I don't think they're storing it all here, but.
Yeah. No, absolutely right. So we, we can do that. Pretty soon, we're going to cover the whole waterfront.
Yeah.
All 20 sectors.
In the healthcare sector, with the growing of retirement centers or transitional housing assisted livings, I guess I'd be interested in this sector. I know it comes under healthcare, but there is a large sector of CNAs, you know, that lower level, that next step down from nursing that has been certainly a need, an unmet need, that we're not meeting the capacity for the needs out there.
Yeah.
So it is, I would think it would be contributing.
I'm glad you bring that up, Council President Wilkerson, because in fact, this sector is called healthcare plus social assistance. And social assistance consists of youth care and elder care. And it's about 25% of the total healthcare and social assistance. So it's not insignificant. 25% of 46,000 is, is five, is a five-digit number. And that, given the demographic trends, which we don't show you, but it's on Spokane Trends, the share of the population that is 65-plus is growing. And that's going to obviously put some higher demand for those kind of services.
I thought we were aging younger for a while, because I thought at some point we had heard our average age was like 36, 37 years old.
Yeah, the median age is, is a little younger. I'd have to go back and look. I don't know whether that's true anymore.
Okay.
When I first started presenting to you years ago, it was, but I think we've, we've aged.
I'm in that category.
Next part will be Professor Cullen. Let's get her teed up here. I appreciate the dialogue, some very good questions. Come on. Okay, let's talk construction.
All right. I know you guys probably get a presentation on building permits. I, I think I've seen those as well. We provide just a little bit different look than what they give you sometimes, maybe a longer time series perhaps. This is quarterly data. This is residential building permits. I have it broken down by both single-family and multifamily. This is at first just the single-family. And we're seeing an acceleration and uptick in single-family in particular. After that slight drop in 2021 there, you can see my arrow showing you that we're now at a relative peak. I say relative peak. If we go back, this is the highest quarter since the end of 2020, just before the pandemic. This is where we're at this quarter, very healthy. That's second quarter, by the way. The dark purple is second quarter of 2024. So very strong permitting on the single-family going on here at the city. It's been higher than the last two years, using the same quarter, quarter two of '23 and '22, right? And if you just look year-to-date so far, right, because we're halfway through, so this is the end of second quarter, halfway through, we're 80% above where we were last year at this point, six months in. And so over 80 more homes have been permitted since June of last year. So that's looking, strong growth in the single-family. Now, the opposite story, residential, I mean, multifamily is down. So this is multifamily, building permits is down significantly. In fact, I had to double-check the report from June. There were none, no, zero, just for the month of June. Very small number for second quarter. As you can see, that little tiny dot there, maybe what, 12 permits or something? Oh, sorry, sorry.
So is that because of the lag of when they're in the pipeline? When they're permitted to, where they actually start being built? Because I know we had that huge spike.
Yep, yep. So yeah, you see those, right? The towers.
And so then are we starting where it's starting to ramp up?
Usually it's an, it's ongoing process, you know what I mean? There's some permitting, while there's some that are finishing up construction, you know what I mean? So it's interesting that at this stage, the beginnings, you're absolutely right, this is the beginning stage, right? So yeah. So there's also, at the same time, there's some that are in construction and some that are wrapping up construction. So in the next year or so, we will see not as many finishing. Does, is that, does that answer the question? Okay. Councilmember Cathcart?
And I'm wondering if maybe the, the data is incomplete, because I know there were a lot of folks who were trying to beat the, the deadline, to beat the energy code, and so there was a big rush.
That was the surge there, right?
Is that, is that reflected in Q1 then? Is that what that is?
So, so yeah, that, the light purple there, that would have been second quarter or third quarter last year, right? So that would have been.
But this year, there was another, I think, point where they were trying to get them in, and that was around July, which I think would be in that second, maybe even third quarter data, I'm not sure. But I'm just wondering if maybe there's.
No, I remember what you're talking about.
Is there a way for you guys to marry this up with housing starts? So that we can see if there's any differential between what gets permitted and then actually constructed?
Oh, interesting.
And particularly the timeframes in which.
Right, right.
We'd have to ask the city if they have those.
To make that happen.
Okay. I, I know that there is organizations that, that collect that data. I don't, but.
Yeah, absolutely. And then again, just to point out, so there's different categories of the multifamily building permits, and that most of them have been in larger apartment buildings, having more, five or more units. So we're not looking at small places, we're looking at big apartment buildings. So one permit might have like 160 units. Does that make sense? So, but definitely slowing right now, which could just be where at the bottom, we may see it picking up again, right? In terms of this multifamily, kind of surprising for me, I thought, so. Yeah. So then, looking at, oh, sorry, I went the wrong way, didn't I? Let's try this again. Okay. So then what types of houses are being built in terms of the permitted value? Now, this is not the sale value, right? This is not what it goes on the market for, but this is the permitted value. But it does give us some sense of that this is, they're building on average, houses that are similar to the median home resale price. So, and again, with that red arrow, it is trending upward, but not, you know, not accelerating, I would say. So in this case, since two years or three years ago, since '21, the average value, so three years ago, the average value of the permitted single-family residence has gone up 30%, so about 10% a year, when you put it into that terms. And then I added at the end, so we're at what, like 420 as of second quarter? The average value of the houses that were permitted in second quarter of this year was about 420. And then the median home resale price in the most recent quarter in the county for Spokane is 442. So pretty similar.
I just want to point out, there's a typo in, in the numbers here. These aren't millions, it reads.
Oh, does it say millions?
Well, there's a comma there.
Oh.
Pull the comma out.
Oh, shoot.
And it's 420,000.
Sorry, sorry. Absolutely. I didn't catch that when I was looking at my slides. Sorry about that. Yep. No, definitely thousands, right? So yeah, the, not surprising that the average value of these houses is rising along with what we've seen, the uptick in the median home resale price. And then it's a little trickier with the construction of the multifamily units. We don't know what they're going to be renting for, you know what I mean? So we don't know. And in fact, if we're talking about a big complex, they may have a mix of one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, inefficiencies even. So, but this is still, we take the total permitted value, divide by the number of units to kind of just look at it, and to look at the trend, right? What's been going on? Are we building more expensive, or are we permitting, sorry, more expensive apartments or less? And interestingly, I circled that we had this blip last year, right? We see this blip where the, had a lot of construction and therefore a lot of expense associated with those. And so the average permitted value of multifamily units did rise, but it has, in the most recent quarter, second quarter of '24, returned to the red box. What I'm saying is more expected values of what we've been experiencing in the last couple of years, so.
So with all the new multifamily units coming online, I would hope we would see a stabilization in cost of units, and how that really would affect our older housing stock in the community. Yes, people want to move up to something new that does leave the lower entry level out there.
Yep.
Which I have seen more units available for rent in the last month than I've seen in a long time, just anecdotally throughout the city.
Interesting. And that would definitely align with what we would expect, right? People would want to upgrade. Yep, for sure. Yep. So yeah, so if you, in terms of the numbers, since, was that another question? So, since second quarter of '21, the average permitted value of the new multifamily units has increased by a third, 33%. So just to put a number on how much it has changed. And then you guys asked for this, and I had this prepared for the last time, and then we didn't meet, so I don't think I've shown you these slides. This is housing affordability. And there's two aspects to it, there's two sides, there's. And there's two aspects to it, there's two sides. There's the homeowners and the renters. We've been talking about single family and multifamily, right? So if we think about, it's important for a community to have housing in order to attract and retain workers and to be a viable economy. We care both about the homeowners as well as the renters. So I have two slides, one for homeowners and one for renters. Then I have it further divided by the average, the median, or the all, including all home buyers. And then separating out and looking just at our first-time home buyers. So our first-time home buyers tend to be younger, tend to have lower incomes, tend to buy houses that are slightly less expensive, right? And by the way, this data is all provided. I do have to give a shout out to the Washington Center for Real Estate Research over at UW. They have a great resource for this. I was able to get city-level data, not county-level data. They have both. But I'm presenting to you the city-level data. Does that make sense? Because sometimes we have to proxy. We don't have city-level data, so we have to proxy with a county, but this is in fact, city-level data. And so what you see, this is a ratio, and it's a ratio of your income over your house payment. And that includes the payment, the interest, and other associated fees, the cost of the mortgage, right, kind of idea. And so in this case, so 100 would mean that you have the right amount of income to provide, to cover your housing expenses. And typically, we think of housing expenses should be about 30% of your income, right? Okay, so if you hit 100, that means that's normal. Does that make sense? If we drop below 100, and that's what the red line denotes up there across both graphs. The red line denotes where is that equal, that equal ratio between income and housing expense. And so if we drop below, as we have most recently, even across all home buyers, that means that your income is not high enough, that your expenses are higher. Does that make, relatively speaking, that that ratio is below 100, that means housing is more expensive, right? When we're above, that means housing is more affordable. Okay, so above 100, more affordable, below 100, more expensive, less affordable. And so the story here is it's gotten worse, right? So we're seeing, but we kind of have flattened off a little bit in the last couple of years, last two years in particular. Even though it is more expensive, it is not getting too much more expensive. If you compare the start of 111, which is affordable, more affordable, and then 60, that looks stark, right? That's a big drop. But in the last two years, it hasn't gone down that much, right? That's for all home buyers. Now, if we tease out the first-time home buyers and we use what? Media, an income that's 70% of the median household income. So again, like I mentioned, slightly lower level of income threshold and 85% of the median house price, so a little bit lower. Not too much lower, but 85% of the median house price, right? So we're talking about those, that group. Now it looks a lot more expensive. So our first-time home buyers are really more pressed in terms of making those payments, having the income that is sufficient to support their house payment. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so that's disappointing because we are trying or partnering with so many entities for first-time home buyer programs. But even with those programs, they're still not meeting the threshold for down payment assistance, credit assistance, all those things continue to be a challenge, no matter how we seem to layer on or how we stack these programs to help first-time home buyers. And to that chart, none of them are ever over 100%. So that's disconcerting. Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, I mean, this is gutting to see, honestly. But it's also, I mean, it confirms, I think, again, a lot of, you know, what we know. But I'm just curious for my own edification, because from quarter one of 2021 for all home buyers, and then you have that massive drop to quarter one of 2022. Once we hit that, then it pretty much is like, hits that sort of plateau. So what was the driving factor that caused that drop between those two times?
I'll just take a stab at that, Councilmember Dillon. So as Professor Cullen said, it's a ratio with income in the top and home prices or cost of servicing the mortgage in the denominator. Incomes don't go up that much. They go up by 2% to 4% per year. So what's really driving that is the housing market. And probably a rapid, we'd have to go back and look at Spokane Trends, a rapid acceleration of the median home price between 2021 and 2023.
That was my good instinct as well. Yep, that's what I would have said. If we looked at the graph, it probably trends well together.
Would that correlate with in-migration?
That's a good question. I don't know. It could. My general sense, though, is that the average cost of building a home, so on the supply side, not the demand side, has really changed since 2018 through a variety of factors that we can, we could talk at some length about. But I think it's more the supply side than the demand side.
Awesome. So that is the news for the homeowners, and then we can do a similar analysis for our renters. And so in this case, this is a relationship between income and rent, right? And on the left is all renters, and this is again, city-level data throughout the city of Spokane. And good news, right? You can see that we're well above the red line in this case on the left, meaning that rent is affordable here for all across the board on average, right? On average, all renters across the city. But then, when you zoom in again on our, in this case, they call transitional renters or sometimes at-risk renters, right, down in the lower threshold. And so I forget what the cutoff is, but there's 70% of the median income, right? So our, not necessarily impoverished group, but 70% of the median income group down here. And we look at their income to rent relationship, and it's pretty much at parity, right? It's even. There's a difference, a clear difference between all renters and this group, but this group is still pretty close to that red line. So it looks like the renter situation is not as dramatic of a difference as the homeowners.
Just so I make sure I'm understanding, so the reason the transitional renters would be lower, even though many of them would probably have more affordable rents, would really be the lower income? Is that, that's really the differentiator? Okay.
Yep, you got it. Any questions on these two, these two new slides, four new measures that we've added for you?
Just quickly, so the transitional, 70% of the city's median household income.
To be in that category.
To be in that category. What number are you using for 70% then?
The median household income?
So that, give me a ballpark of what that would be.
So median household income in the city of Spokane most recently, which is 2022, we'll get 2023 data out in a couple of weeks, yes, next week, is about in the low 60s. 62, 63,000.
That's great, but knowing that maybe our folks are in the 40s.
And that's what that is.
And that's, okay.
Yep, that's the group you were just talking about with the 42. Yep.
I think it'd be really interesting to compare this with the valley and then countywide. To see how we compare on these numbers.
I'll make a note of that. I'll add another element to that, yeah. I think there's too many periods in here, too. I think I can simplify the graph and add the comparison for you. Sure, this is my first attempt, right? Trying to get the information to you guys and hopefully. So I think that's all I have, right? Yep, so thank you. Join back over to Dr. Jones.
Okay, apropos income, here you have it. This is taken as a screenshot from Spokane Trends. And yeah, I was a little off. City is 63,000. The county is considerably higher, it's 69,000, so it's 10% higher. The US is higher yet, and then the state of Washington is quite high. We have, I think on a national basis, we're in the top 10 states for income. And of course, that's not determined by the east side, but more or less by the west side. But we bring up income because this is what drives economic activity at the consumer level. And the consumer level activity is what provides then, through sales tax and to some degree through the real estate excise tax, revenue for the city. I'll just point out, even though the city has been below the county median, it's growing faster. And I haven't done any sort of scenario to see if this pace continues, when will the city catch up with the county? But it's conceivable, and my guess is offhand is maybe a decade. Okay, so retail taxable sales, the most recent quarter we have is for last, the, I'm sorry, the first quarter of this year. That's the dark purple on the side. It was 1.6 billion. So you have, you know, you have revenues in the high single-digit billions of taxable retail sales of the city. So I want to point out that the orange line is the growth rate from the quarter from a prior, the same quarter from a prior year. And then we have the dotted lines, which are the city, the county of Spokane and Washington State as a whole. And you can see for most of the period, city taxable retail sales have been growing more slowly than the county overall or the state of Washington, until the last two quarters. And I was reading about the sort of revised budget outlook from your CFO today. And, you know, when I look at the last two quarters, it's a much better situation. You're growing, you know, almost at 2% per quarter. The question is, obviously, you know, what will be going forward in 2025? But this is almost the first time in the two years that we've, in the multi-years that we track this, where the city taxable retail sales has grown faster than the county. Don't know the reasons for that, but we could investigate. However, if you look at the state of Washington as a guide to what might happen in the future, it's still, I think, somewhat challenging. So this is looking at monthly data. We got two years' worth of data. And for the most recent period, which we don't have for you, we have basically second-quarter data, so April, May, June. And you can see that the June numbers most recently are about equal to the June numbers from a year ago. So no growth. And if you look at the blue line, which is the year-over-year monthly increase, if there is one, it's negative for the second quarter. So to the degree that Spokane correlates with the state, which I think is pretty high, this could be happening here. Yes, Councilmember Calacar.
Well, and you mentioned, you know, '25, but really, we have to project for '25 and '26 with a biennial. And so based on that, based on state trends, based on the fact that we typically tail, I mean, what is the safe projection, do you think, that we should be considering?
I'll show you. It's coming right up, at least on the income side. There hasn't been. So this is, so the Economic Revenue and Forecast Council releases four updates to its work every year. This is the most recent one. This is June. And this is looking at what we call personal income, which again, is very highly correlated with median household income. And that drives economic activity. So, and by the way, personal income state is highly correlated with personal income in Spokane County. So I feel confident saying, how's the state goes, then to a large degree, the city and the county will go. So my bottom bullet kind of answers your question. The council is now projecting a little bit higher finish to the fiscal year, which we just ended at the end of June. We'll get the data in a couple of months. But a bit lower for fiscal year '25, which we're in the middle of, and a little higher than it forecast for fiscal year 2026, which will go through, you know, July 1 of 2025 through June 30 of 2026. So the numbers are 5.5% for 2025 and 6.5% for 2026. That, I would not say that's going to be retail sales. That's just income. So if anything, a rule of thumb, I'd divide that by half.
So two and a half is your?
Yeah, I'd say that, I always feel comfortable with that kind of a range for the city. Okay, so I'll just wrap up. This is, I think, our last slide here. The personal income forecast is quite similar to what we saw. We're looking at mid-single-digit growth. We did see during the pandemic, double-digit growth. But that had a lot to do with Washington DC and a lot of federal stimulus coming our way. So I'm just saying, the city could probably expect a similar outcome. Taxable retail sales overall for last year was a little above 1.5%. That is considerably below the long-term average, which you can see is the first sub-bullet of, for 20 years, it's about 4%. So 1.6 versus 4.2%. I don't anticipate 1.6% to continue. But, you know, this kind of, this kind of activity is never a straight line. It bounces around an average. So my sense is for 2024, based on what we see from the Economic Forecast Council, that the first half is going to be relatively weak, and the second half should pick up a little bit, if their forecast is accurate. Basically, the ERFC has been quite conservative in their forecasting. So they've undershot what actually happened in the state, and right now, they're like within one one-thousandth of what's been going on. So pretty accurate at the moment. You never know. These are, things can change. But that wraps up our quarterly update. And we took a little longer than I think Professor Cullen and I anticipated. We thought we'd get through this in 45 minutes, but you asked so many good questions that I hope it was worth your while.
Any other questions for Dr. Jones? Dr. Cullen, Councilmember Dillon?
Thank you so much. This is so helpful, and I think it really does inform our policymaking so much on all the different sectors that you outlined. I keep racking my brain a little bit about some of the housing to income ratio and also thinking through too, I mean, just as we head into these budget discussions. It's just really, really critical that we have this. So just thank you again so much for all you do.
Thank you. We're, this is a fun project for us, you know. We don't do this for any other entity throughout all of our work in Eastern Washington, but just for the city of Spokane, I applaud you for challenging us to come up with this stuff.
Thank you, thank you. And just because she's here, I don't know if you've met the new budget director for city council. Kate, if you, you'd probably be hearing from Kate Fairborn, so just want to introduce you to her. She replaces our former budget director, but already been an asset to us, help us weed through all the things you shared with us today. So thank you much, and we'll see you again.
We'll get together, and we'll be back, I think, now in November, right?
Next quarter.
Thank you all. Have a good one. I don't think there's anything else to come before us in study session today. Thank you all. We are adjourned.